Folks, let's, um, call placid, please, let's get going. First, uh, thank you all for coming. I'm Jim Holdrods. I'm your new commissioner. Who's appointed to fill Mr. Dominguez's spot. Just a little bit of background on me. I am not politically correct, which you will soon discover. I belong to a different tribe. I am not a politician. I took this job because there were some things that needed to be done. Okay? Jumping ahead, I'm the guy that voted for tabling the oil and gas ordinance until such time as the report comes in from New Mexico Tech, which is in May. Let me get a chance to look at it. It seems really absurd to me to pay $60,000 for something and not use it. Okay? So, there are no dumb questions today. I'll try and take your questions. If I don't know the answer, I'm gonna tell you. All right? And, let me say something to you. Our form of government only works if you participate. And let me give you an example that we just went through in the last couple of days. You're all aware that starting 1 January, the county has signed a contract with a California company to do trash pickup, yes? You're all aware of that? Okay. The people in Placitas took a survey and said, "We don't want it. We want to keep our present haulers." And, the commission said, "Okay." The people, and I kid them, the forgotten people in the East Mountain area didn't hear about it. They didn't attend any of the commission meetings. And let me ask you a question. Are you all aware that you can watch live the county commission meetings? How many in the world? Folks, get on your computer, you go to Sandoval County Home, and you can watch the meeting. And particularly, you might want to watch it this coming Thursday night, because it's gonna be a fun fill time. Anyway, I will leave it there. Back to the East Mountain. So, late November, two weeks ago, United Waste Services, which got the contract, started sending letters out saying, "Hey, as of 1 January, we're doing it." And, people went bananas. So, we met with them last Wednesday, and they packed the gymnasium, okay? The gods must have been favoring them, because as of, they said, it's been a crazy week. As of yesterday afternoon, Universal Waste Systems has agreed to subcontract to Maude Hauling, who's been up there for 15 or 16 years, to do the work. Now, some of the folks up there are still unhappy, because there's a price differential, probably, I think before they were paying around $15 or $16, now the price is around 20, or in the low twenties, okay? If they had been listening, if they had kept an eye on the county commission, what the county commission is doing, they could have done the same thing that Placitas did, and that is to ask for an exemption, okay? So, our government won't work without you being active in it. And, I'll leave it there. What I'd like to cover this afternoon is Vulcan's presence, real quick, then go into oil and gas. How many people here from Cochise? Cochise area? Super. Okay. I talked with your fire chief this morning, is John here? Okay, I talked with John this morning. You all, as I understand it, need a new fire engine and an ambulance, and so we're gonna be working with Chief Max to try and, try and get that done, okay? And again, where I'm coming from is, no nonsense, my tribe, once they're given a mission, and Rob can attest to this, we go and move heaven on earth to get it done, okay? And again, let me talk about Vulcan. When I was up here last week, it looked like it was, they had some activity here. I'm familiar with their operation, because we have Vulcan up to our ears in Placitas. We just worked a long deal out with them. They wanted to stay another 13 years. They have an open gravel pit, the dust is constantly going all over, it's lowered home values, they've agreed to leave in nine years, six months, the last six months, to take care of the land. So, when I called them after Rob showed me what was going on here, I got kind of a wishy-washing answer. So, I will pursue that this week, and get the information passed back on to you. Keep in mind, that this area is permissive use, which means they simply have to go to planning and zoning, and say, "We want to do X, Y, or Z," okay? So, you really need to keep an eye out over there. I'm not saying they're bad guys, please don't understand me, but, you need to be on top of it.
I've got a question.
Questions, comments? Sir?
Is that the old colony pit?
Ma'am?
Is that the old colony pit? Where you see Vulcan now, is it the old colony pit?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so are they grandfathered in?
I don't know.
Okay. Do we have a mining ordinance in our county, yes? Yes? Yes, we do, we do, okay, so I know we do. Aren't they subject to the existing mining ordinance? Even if they're grandfathered in? I mean, they must have some...
I'm gonna ask you again, please stupidity, I don't know.
If they're grandfathered in, you can raise hay all day long, you're not gonna get them out of there legally. So, I would just, you know, we're gonna fight about stuff, fight about stuff that you have a shot at winning.
Again, I'm a newbie in the lot. A lot of the stuff I don't know, I'm learning as I go. All right, let me talk about oil and gas. And let me start off with a story. People come back from war zones with, with different memories. Mine is water, okay? Who the devil's he talking about? I was a recon Marine. We would go out in groups of six to eight people. We were the crazies that went out where the bad guys were, whole bunches of them, a few of us. We typically put her in six to eight canteens of water. When that water ran out, we didn't get any more, there was no resupply, you didn't call a helicopter to come in and say, you know, drop stuff in the heavens. By the second or third day without water, your body starts to cream puff. Around the fourth day, your judgment kind of goes by the borders, all right? The point I'm trying to make is, water then was precious, water now is precious, and it needs to be protected. If I could call your attention to this map here, state of New Mexico, northwest corner, if you notice the brown area here, and the brown area here, Carlsbad, Gallup, Farmington, that the subterranean is such, that you can drill without endangering the aquifer, all right? And again, there's 526 wells up here, some are active, some have just even up the ghost. Call your attention to the middle of the map. The aquifer, right in the middle, excuse me, here's the Rio Grande. There's a strip that runs from the East Mountains down through Placitas, Bernalio, Algodones, San Diego Pueblo, up into Rio Rancho, that looks like this. It's highly faulted. In some areas, the aquifer, or the mini aquifers, are right up against the Mankos Shale. Mankos Shale is what they're drilling down to, to get oil and gas. This area is highly fragmented, and to drill in here, there's a high degree of probability of polluting the water. Yes? Yes, for darn sure. Again, the belt that runs across here and here, I'm gonna mention a company, Thrust Energy. Thrust Energy has 55,000 leased acres from BLM. They want to drill over here, leave that hanging in the air. Can you see this back there? You can pretty much make it out, because I'm gonna talk to this chart.
When you said a high probability, can you quantify that?
You've been having beer a lot of years, you've blown out.
Can you quantify high probability into a number?
If I said, "Oh my God," would that do it? Yeah. I'm serious.
Me too. I'm waiting, I just, I wanna know, what, what do we say?
And we all need to be aware, for every barrel of oil that comes up, six barrels of water have to be used in that process, or six barrels of chemicals.
Not and/or?
Either/or.
And that, meaning, that's 14 billion gallons of water or chemicals that go into the ground, so where are they gonna get that from? Because it's mixed with the chemicals.
Yes. The chemicals or the water, in fracking, are placed into the ground in high pressure to blow their way through. And that's where the danger comes in. Again, you can do that here and here safely, but you darn sure can't do it here, all right? And again, as we go along, we try and paint you a picture, because this has been, for those of us who are working this issue who are really concerned, been driving us crazy. And let me jump back and jump in at the same time. Thursday evening is the county commission meeting. At that point in time, the amended oil and gas ordinance will be voted on. Right now, there's two votes against, three, two votes to kill it, three votes to pass it. Myself, Ken Iqual from Cuba. On Thursday evening, I'm gonna again make a motion for tabling. Ken is going to second it. We're praying that we can get that third vote. If we can do that, and we can bring this thing to a screeching halt, one of the things I don't understand, and I'm sure you don't either, why are we racing like crazy on something that needs so much thought, and in which there are inherent dangers? Yes? Sir?
You need a third vote to delay?
To table it.
Table, thank you.
Ma'am?
Who do you think is our most likely?
James. Was that a question, ma'am?
That was one of my questions. The other is, if the BLM is an active participant and they have potential to drill in, what can we do as residents of this state, and our state doesn't seem to be helping us? Would the BLM say, "Remove the leases"? I mean, there's the land, a lot of land, for instance, where they, you can see where the water chain is, and all they have to do is go into what they consider a slightly safer area. If it gets polluted down below, it's gonna come up a mess, and we really need it.
Let me answer your question like this. If, if we can't get three votes, and it passes, then there already are two groups that are talking about bringing suit against the county, okay? On the meeting following, if we don't, if we don't win, if we can't kill it, then I want to reintroduce a motion to modify the ordinance. Commissioner Heil put in an amendment last meeting, in which he made exclusionary zones. Hopefully, one of the things we could do was to get more exclusionary zones where they could not drill. But, that's not gonna solve the problem. Sir?
Yeah, if you're looking for one more vote to table it, why not use that vote to kill it? You have, you'll have five commissioners, so three of you could kill it. Why table it? Just kill it.
The will isn't there.
Sir?
What's preventing the other commissioners to see this as an, "Oh my God" situation?
I'm sorry, save ya.
What's preventing the other commissioners to see this as, as an, "Oh my God" situation? Why don't they see the draw?
Does this see dollars?
I don't think it's money. Let me give you mine, sir. I think Chairman Chapman is to be commended for helping to pull the county commission, county government, out of the 19th century into the 21st century. He's really hard over, he wants to bring in business, jobs, bring up the economic welfare of the county. I think that is what is driving him. We've all been accused of taking money from the oil companies. And my response to people who say that is, I have seen the new Jaguar F model, and it costs about $63,000, so if you're gonna put money in my hands, I'd like around $63,000. Now, obviously, I'm being facetious. I think we've got some smart people in the council. Why they don't understand the inherent danger, the high degree of probability of polluting the aquifer, is beyond me. Now, I'll allude to that when I take you through.
We do not have to address them, they're so, they're here because they're so wrong.
I don't know. The three that live in Rio Rancho would be the first one to be infected.
Look, they're not looking at this presentation, and there's the problem. They have to open their eyes and look.
The issue of jobs, I think, is a fiction, because the oil companies ruin people, their own people, in outside. They did that in the last city they could ever, everywhere they go.
Yes, but, I, I think, I think this part, partly is driving what they want to do, is it sends the word out, that we're interested, okay? You're aware that New Mexico is, follow me, you're aware that New Mexico is not a right-to-work state, correct? Okay. Texas is, Arizona is, Colorado is not, but they have, they've somehow worked around it, okay? The growth has taken place in those three states historically, has totally outstripped us. One of the issues we have coming up, two meetings out, is a right-to-work ordinance. I think we need to, to pass that. That doesn't mean that we're excluding unions, but what it does is sends the word. I have friends who are in the business development industry, now if it's called Fancis, which is a business located, companies go to them and say, "Hey, you wanna put in a new plant, tell us where to put it." New Mexico is arbitrarily excluded, because we don't have right to work. Ma'am?
Well, the facts are that right to work actually directly creates our low-paying jobs. That's not what we need here.
Let me do this. I used to say I had my flat jacket on today. Let me leave right to work, and let's, let's come back and revisit it. I'd be happy to come back up and talk to you, because I'm very much in favor of it. But, let's go to oil and gas, yes? Please? And then if we got extra time, we'll come back to this. Sir?
A question about becoming one of these exclusionary zones. You had mentioned that other people had presented modifications to become an exclusionary zone. How would we go about doing that? What defines the boundaries? What not, why not bring that up the night of, the next vote, if the motion, your motion to table fails? And the other question is, there been any discussion amongst the commissioners to set aside additional permitting fees or revenue produced by those, to pay into a separate trust fund, to be directed by commissioners and members of the committee, to deal with the blowback that happens after that?
Okay, everything you say is right in the heart, but unless we can table that bloody thing, then it goes forward. And my concern is, that Thrust Energy will move immediately to drill.
So, the Thrust Energy is the main culprit? And someone we might see in our community?
You, let me pick and choose my words, because I don't want him coming back to haunt me. I'm saying, Thrust Energy is an unknown player in this equation, and I'll come back to visit that in a second.
They're a possible suspect.
Let me leave that there. Okay, sir?
Can you, my understanding is, the amendment to the Stoddard ordinance, that's gonna be voted on next week, put in some exclusionary zones for part of the county, but not us? Can you explain what criteria were used to make that assessment, of why this area is not deserving for the same protection?
I cannot, you'd have to speak to Commissioner Heil. I don't know. Because I, I'm sure it would have tripled that, or quadrupled it.
It seems arbitrary and capricious on the face of it.
And, one other point, the oil and gas ordinance doesn't, it has no legal authority with tribal, with Pueblo, with the Pueblos. But, if you're fracking, and you're sending down a vertical shaft, and then you're running a horizontal, and the Pueblo's side by side to that area, then they could be impacted also. So, Monday morning, 10 o'clock, we're meeting with all the Pueblo governors, and...
Where's that meeting?
That'll take place in, in Bernalio, I'm sorry.
Is that open to the public?
No, by design.
Will there be any minutes? Will there be any minutes to that meeting?
I'll tell you what happens.
Okay.
And the reason we're doing it is because the Pueblo governors at 1 o'clock meet with Chairman Chapman, and we're gonna try, and I'll be honest, to put the pressure on the governors, to put the pressure on Chapman, to table this bloody thing. Ma'am?
Chris, I'm here. And, the question about whether there is a legal issue in dividing this county into two different kinds of use, conditional and permissive use. These rural areas, where there are actually maybe 8,000 or 10,000 people between Algodones and Cochise. Under permissive use, there's no public notice, there's no, no opportunity for public commentary. Is it a legal issue that we treat differently, with fewer protections for the most fragile, the greatest at risk, the purest aquifer in the state? Is there, is there something that can be contested about?
Yes, but, unless you all write herds on the county commission, and I totally violently oppose permissive use, because right now somebody could come in, next door over here, 750 feet from their property, and do damn near whatever they want. That's unacceptable.
And my other question was, can that be changed, and how do we change it?
I position the county commission, and if you're system doing that, I'll work with you. I'm very much in favor of special use, which requires, as it stands right now, if that passes, one person, the head of planning and zoning, has dictatorial power, and say, "Yeah or no." It shouldn't be that, it should go to the county commission, particularly in any matters with water that are so critical, okay? And so, in permissive use, one person, a non-elected person, and a nice, like it's a bad guy, he is not, but he has the power of God to say, "Yes, I will do it."
I have had experience with living in a little country, I was married to a family that was part of Exxon, and I also have a lot of experience in living in, in conditions where we are on a very fragile aquifer here. We are, we are crisscrossed with all kinds of fault lines. A volcano is not much fun, earthquakes are not much fun, both of them together are terrifying. And, when, in Oklahoma, I have friends who are in the area that is suffering right now, and their houses are falling apart, because there's not an 8-point or 9-point like there was in Alaska, that, that you can be fracked on. But, they, their houses are falling apart. And, we also, one more thing, we have a dam. We have a dam that's primary purpose is to keep out of aquifer people from flooding. It is an earthen dam, there, there's no guarantee how long it's gonna last. It leaks every day of the year, by design. And if they start fracking, and start causing small earthquakes, that dam, Cochise, Pueblo, Pinellas, all the way down the line, it'll be the first ones that get hit. And eventually, aquifer will. Why can't these people see what they are doing is opening up Pandora's Box?
I don't, and that's the reason why I sent it in a letter, and I tried to contact the Bernalio County Commission, to say, "All of you guys in this camp, a third of the state's population is down in that area."
That's right.
I just feel like that interview was a mess.
If it's not just everybody, this is the only area.
On the, on the last commissioners meeting, I brought that up, of what the dam can do. I went as far as calling them murderers, because that's what they will do, they will kill people once that, that dam breaks. And they can't see it? What is wrong with them? I, I know, I know that the main commissioner, the head guy, he's out there, he's not paying attention, he's out here fidgeting. Once we get up there, he doesn't pay attention, gets cool, or anything from Rio Rancho, his attention is on him, and they don't say anything. But, they, they talk about this, this oil, and he's up there fidgeting, not paying attention to anything that we say. I, I've been watching him.
I agree. Bear with me, if you would just hold your questions, will we take you through the sequence? And probably answer your questions, but also raise more. Back in July 2016, the county commission went to New Mexico Tech and said, "We would like to get professional services contract in place." It was signed. It was not a money contract, but it's an on-demand contract. At some point in time in the future, we would contract with New Mexico Tech to do X, Y, or Z. That statement of work said 3... That statement of work said three things. Help us develop public policy, focus on water, quality and quantity, and review the geological setting in relationship to oil and gas drilling and water. In other words, what's safe, okay? 2016. We jump here over to this year in July. And we sign an assessment, Oil and Gas Resource Assessment of Sandoval County and the relationship of potential resources to groundwater. In other words, compare and contrast the possibility of oil and gas drilling in relationship to water. In looking through this document, and as of Tuesday or Wednesday last week, the other commissioners were not aware of this document. Here's a budget spreadsheet. 740 hours, the most, or 40%, is being paid to a petroleum geologist. 160 hours, or 9%, is being paid to an aquifer hydrologist. Then we drop down here and it says, travel to Roswell to obtain geologic, geophysical data from Jim Nanat of Thrust Energy. Who made the decision to bring in thrust? I don't know. And that's one of the questions I would like to run up the flagpole, and that we are in fact running up the flagpole. And there's also an interesting piece here. Fringe benefits, $14,000. Okay? I would never negotiate a contract like this. But the point I'm trying to make to you is, in this second document, which was not signed by the county treasurer, which was not signed or approved by the commission, he who has single power, Mike Springfield, the head of planning and zoning, signed off on it. Why didn't the other commissioners know about this document? I don't know. What did the document have to say? Do an oil and gas assessment in relationship to groundwater. But once you take a look through here, it's more and more oriented towards determining where are the most fertile areas to drill for oil and gas? And why is thrust energy in there? I'm intimately familiar with thrust energy because they have worked me over for the last two months. It started off with a one-on-one, then it went to one-on-six, then the third meeting was one-on-eight to convince me that all is wonderful. They never, ever talked about water. They talked about the possibilities, the richness of this area for oil and gas. Why? I don't know. Follow me over here. 12 November, two weeks ago, New Mexico Tech presentation describes drilling effects on Sandoval County water. I discovered that thing about three or four days ago. I don't know why it wasn't passed on to us. All right? And so going down to here, and I want to, I want to read you some quotes. Because I think they're super important. And I'm taking you back now to June of 2016. Here, and I'm quoting Mr. Springfield. "We looked at aquifer protection issues. They are complex. We do not understand them very well. We do need help from the state and New Mexico Tech." Chairman Chapman comes in. And please let this sink in. Quote, "The bottom line is that we want to make an informed decision. We are thinking about our constituents. It just can't be one facet of the energy spectrum, oil. I know nothing about the Albuquerque Basin. It must be based on data and we are going to protect our most precious natural, natural resources, particularly groundwater, something the public can sign off on." What happens between this, these quotes and over here? So let me jump ahead. Two weeks ago, county commission meeting, quote from Chairman Chapman, "The study," whichever one of these the study is, I don't know. The study is not meant to be the basis for this ordinance. Then why are we paying $50,000 for it? And why are we not waiting to look at the bloody thing?
And who said that?
Ma'am?
Who said that the study is not meant to be the basis? Chairman Chapman said it.
Chairman Chapman, okay? One other quote I want to read to you. The document quoting, "Purged aspects of aquifers, including the distribution of aquifers prevalent in the county and the depth to the base of the aquifer interview, integral, will also be manned in reconnaissance manner." This is in conjunction with projected depth to potentially productive oil and gas reserve reservoirs, which will allow for assessment of the effect of oil and natural gas production on aquifers. We've gone then from great concern, hey, I don't know anything about aquifers, to over here, to where we are today. And so my question to the, to the chairman has then is, what's really the object of the study? Is this supposed to, is it not supposed to, take a look at our most precious resource? Or is this designed to provide these guys with, hey, here's where you should drill? If it's the latter case, it is a violation of the anti-donation clause. Yes? Yes? Sir?
As a commissioner, can't you call Mike Springfield in front of the commission and find out why he signed this contract and why the report didn't make it to the commissioners to find out if this guy's working for the oil companies instead of for the citizens?
I want to try and find out why the other commissioners didn't know about the second report, why it didn't go to the commission. Is the bloody thing legal? I don't know.
Sounds like he's usurping the authority of the commission.
There's too many I don't knows in here. I don't know. Sir, ma'am, we'll come right back to that.
Mike Springfield is actually the king of this county commission. The commissioners signed off on the contract, they signed off. And I call on some of the county commissioners to do this. And I told the county commission, I told Chapman, and there's a county commissioner, there's a county commissioner. Mike, the only one that can sign off on the contract of the county commissioners, not Mike Springfield. He said, the governor knows. But I want his best friend to be the governor.
One of the most important questions was asked over here. How did they determine the exceptional areas, the exceptions? Because you said, I don't know what determined those. And why weren't, why wasn't this?
Why isn't Pina Bamba in there?
Yes. And you said, I don't know. Is it because you're brand new or because you weren't there for those discussions or what?
Dave Heil brought them in. Why he arbitrarily picked just those locations, I don't know.
So no evidence of justification?
I would have included a whole raft of places. I would have included everything along that belt line.
Why didn't you?
Yes, ma'am.
Why didn't you?
Because his amendment caught me by surprise. I didn't know he was going to amend it. He brought it up during the meeting.
But you could have amended it as well, no?
Not at that point because it wasn't on the agenda.
Is it?
Let me, let me say something to you. There's, there's a rule that we live by, which it's hard for me to get used to. It's called rolling quorum. I can talk to one other counselor, a commissioner. I cannot talk to anybody else because by law I'm breaking the law. Because if I talk to a third one, that's a quorum. Okay? So sometimes it's like stepping through a minefield. Can I talk to them? So for example, when I sent my letter, the letter that you all got, when I sent my letter out, it had to go to the county manager and then she could send it to everybody, but I could not send it to everybody. And I could appreciate the law.
But you couldn't amend his amendment to add other places?
Not at that point in time.
No.
Not at that point in time because it was not on the agenda. And I would say this to you. I was prepared to make a presentation on Thursday coming. The chairman has forbid me to talk and there's nothing I could do about it. And I'll leave that there. Ma'am, you take your hand up.
I'm going to go to the ground water. New Mexico is going down.
Did you all hear what she said?
No.
Groundwater is going down. I, we were up in with Tom, Tom Gill, who's the homeowners association for San Pedro Estates. And every six months for the 250 properties they have up there, the homes up there, they go and they check water level. It dropped again. It's, we're, we're tapped out of water coming down from the north. We've had some dry seasons. We brought more people in. And I know we're on a well to see this. We just had our pump go out. Murray Drilling told us we're down 102 to 40 feet, that we'll have to drill, probably drill the well in the spring.
But that's why what you're saying before doesn't make sense. You're saying you're for right to work, which she is correct. You're saying you're for bringing businesses and jobs and more people. Now, I own y'all Colorado situation and I don't know Texas and their water levels and their aquifers. We don't have it. We don't have it. We cannot afford more water using businesses or more development.
I agree with you that we're tapped out. I don't want to get into the right-to-work thing now. You're all aware that, is it Facebook that went into Los, Los Angeles?
Yes.
Okay. And they put up six major structures, industrial revenue bonds, no taxes, the whole bit. I don't believe that they're heavy water users.
No.
Sir?
May I speak? I'm on the water board in Pina Bamba, and there's a couple of things we need to remember that had been mentioned. The flow of underground water in this gravelly area is down toward the river. Anything that spilled up above the river ends up under our pump and in the river. So if there's any spill, if somebody spits some tobacco out, it's going to end up there. Second, even if they never have a spill, everything's clean, the water board has got to, I don't know how else we're going to do it, increase our testing regimen. Last month I have figures for, the water board brought in a little over $7,000, of which $12.86 was our profit. We're on a very fine line and if we have to increase our testing, we've got the best water in the state, we've won awards, now we're testing quarterly. If we have to go to monthly or weekly, I don't know. Even if there's never a spill, water, your water bill is likely to go up. And I think that's what you should be saying when you call these other commissioners. It's going to hurt you even if they don't spill.
I know where we are. We're down 240, 40 feet and we have good water. I wouldn't say good water. Good water's harder than a get out. But we have a good supply. Just over the hill, those folks are down 1,500 feet and they got maybe five gallons per minute, which is indicative of that type of terrain. Okay? Ma'am, bear with me. Let me, let me just wrap up here and answer your questions. So what I'm trying to do is give you a sense of this evolution. And here we are today. I don't know which one of these studies is really being done. I can tell you that Monday last, three people who I shall not name, went down to New Mexico Tech to talk to them. And they stated categorically that they have neither the time nor the money to take a look at water resources and that they are focused totally on oil and gas. Okay? So I think that gives you a sense where this study is going.
Well, we know who they are.
I've done all my damage. I'll try and field your questions. This young lady here was... Ma'am, if you could speak up a little bit.
I'm from Johnstown, Pennsylvania, where we had the dam above the town in a row. And that was in the 1700s or something like that. I don't know. It was like, they were farming. My, that's early 1900s and 20th century. But anyway, it just devastated the entire town, you know, and then a fire came. So if there's anybody here from Cochise Pueblo, I would, I think Cochise, you know, should be really, if that dam goes, they're gone. I'm from Cochise Lake, so, you know, I'm with you honestly.
Ma'am?
I'm not speaking for Cochise Pueblo, the leader here. But I am helping the pueblo, trying to navigate all this and get as much information as possible related to the oil and gas. And one of these, our, and the Army Corps of Engineers is to look at what are the potentials? If they look at the potentials of additional seismic activity in the area, do they have any requirements or internal, you know, setbacks so that we could show the commission, say, okay, the setback is a mile, five miles, six miles. And we all know, when the Army Corps of Engineers came in, Cochise, you know, wanted a dam, right? When it was built, it was not the best dam that could be built because of the, you know, the, so one of the things that we also look at is the life of the dam and the stability of the dam. And that's constantly being reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we're trying our best to give that information. There is, we haven't really, you know, said it in public comment in terms of, add a potential impact because we want to get all the information before we start saying, okay, here's, it is a thing. So we're, we're not, there's a lot of stuff, there's a process, but it is always.
I'll respond to you. Hopefully your governor, I believe he's signed on for the meeting on Monday. I'm hoping beyond hope that the governors can put enough pressure on the chair to table this thing. Okay? So pass my compliments on to him, but I hope he's going to be there. Sir?
Yeah, over here.
A few minutes ago, you said that the chairman...
Guys, people up here on the front row, can't you?
I'll repeat what he's saying. I'll repeat what he's saying. A few minutes ago, you said that the chairman... A few minutes ago, you said that the chairman has warned you that you will not be allowed to speak. Did I hear that correctly?
A few minutes ago, the chairman said, you said that the chairman was not allowed to speak.
Did he hear it correctly? That's correct.
That was almost an aside. And I think that that is worthy of laser focus. Because you have been silenced. And is that legal? And is it ethical? That sounds like a complete fractured intent of due process.
Yes, sir. My speaking was going to be a presentation on water. Which would be third on the agenda. I'm not going to be allowed to do that. But
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, water is ruled order. And I, I guess we put, I can't talk. I'll, please, there's a lot of conditions that we can answer. If you don't have a legal background, how come we don't pay up representation from the legal aspect? What is it going to take to get some representation for some people here today? And other people in Sandoval County? Because I think there's a lot of things that can be done. But we don't have the proper person standing up for us. And I'm not saying you, but I'm saying we need some legal representation.
There is no local government that's here in Pinabonta. Let me respond to this question.
What did you say?
Action items. There's seating capacity in, and the third chamber for the commission is 150 people. Then there's the room down below with the big screens. And you can put in, I don't know, another 100 people. That place is going to be packed. There are at least two demonstrations that are going to take place starting around 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
What time is the commission meeting?
What I ask of you is to, and I've asked the same thing of the folks up in La Jara and San Pedro, call and email the other commissioners every day. Every day. Now, their their emails and their telephones are loaded up. I have your petitions against oil and gas. Okay? They didn't disappear in the sunset. I'm going to carry these things around and take them to the meeting again on Thursday. Contact the governor up here at Cochise. Ask him to attend the meeting. Ensure that he's attending the meeting on Monday morning. We're going to have Don Phillips there. Don is a noted hydrologist. Don did all the work here. He also worked for Mobil, Enron, BP, and Shell. So he knows the oil and gas industry. But he also knows water. And we're going to try and put the pressure on the governors. I don't know what else we can do besides you all contacting who's your state representative.
You already told us that they voted on something that wasn't on the agenda. Is that what you said earlier? That's a clear violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you're going to be the commissioner, you got to know the Open Meetings Act with the back of your hand. I'd have New Mexico fob on these people like flies on you know what. Because this, they are not even following their own rules and procedures. And they can't tell you as our commissioner that you can't talk. I'm telling them to go to hell. We are entitled to representation. You're my representative. And I want to hear your voice right now.
I hate to lose. I mean, I hate to lose. I called the county manager. And I also went to Heather Smoak, our county attorney, and said, why can't they talk? She said, because that's the way the rules are.
Well, this is something that the humans have to be drove against. We're water.
Commissioner. Okay. What if we all get together and we go out there? And when you want to speak, we make sure you speak. And then that big dumb ass is not going to stop me.
Yeah, you should push him straight up. No trouble. He will rightfully so. He will declare me out of order. If I open my mouth, the five deputies are there. And they're going to carry me away.
No, they'll carry you away. But we need to be able to unite.
I do not understand. You say you cannot speak since you are a member of the commission and you represent such a large area that's going to be pressured. I don't understand it.
I'll give you my answer. Because I was bringing in a noted expert who was going to say basically, primarily, the same things that I said to you. He has met with, this gentleman has met with the other county commissioners, including Chairman Chapman, twice to try and get these points across.
Well, that's the problem. Is there a solution to bringing action against them? And make sure you are heard? Or do we need back to this question? Legal representation?
Okay. Bear with me. I'm trying to reach out to every tool, every weapon that I can get my hands on to get that third vote. Would you all consider contacting your state representative? And have he or she call Chapman? I went down, I talked with Jack Horst, the mayor of Virnaleo. Jack is beside himself. Because you're aware of the water problems that Virnaleo has. Not only is the water level dropping, but it's heavily laced with arsenic. And it costs a lot to fix that.
Our state rep already spoke at the meeting.
Derek Lunt.
Yep. About there, we would please.
I think Derek Lunt was quite good at last Thursday's meeting when he spoke. And he's our representative. Also, I have a question. I don't know if anybody can answer. Can the Pueblos, do they have any legal ability to stop the trucks going through their pueblo?
Sure. Well, those of us who live above Albuquerque are not the only ones that are going to be severely impacted by this drilling for that. The city of Albuquerque has a whole lot bigger population and a whole lot more people who stand to lose, a whole lot more. And if the world, or if United States knows that there is polluted water in Albuquerque's, in Albuquerque area and in all of the central part of New Mexico, all the way down to El Paso, do, who thinks that businesses are going to want to relocate here where the quality of life is nothing? That is an absolute certainty. And furthermore, the cost, the medical care cost will skyrocket. And the state and the county will share under responsibility for that loss. Money is also...
Has to take into consideration the uniquenesses of the county. And one of which is waters is precious. We really can't, we can't...
One thing is, I think what we need to do, well, at the last meeting, Chairman Chapman said that if people, there were about 300 protesters there. And he said, if, well, there's only 300. If people were really against it, there would be thousands. So I think that's one thing is that we all need to get our families, our friends, ourselves, down there and put our bodies on the line about this. The other, second thing is, we need to reach out to the media as much as possible. Because this is a huge issue for the economic well-being of this county and for the state.
Why don't we have wind and solar discussions? I mean, this is sunshine here most of the time.
Ma'am, I'm with you. But for right now, anything that you can dream of to impact that meeting, we need that third vote.
And they can be voted out of the commission, right?
This past weekend, on, I think it was Channel 413, they had a documentary of all the Indian Pueblos here from Santa Clara on down, from Taos on down. And I mean, they were talking about the sacred lands. They were talking about everything. Now, why can't the other commissioners want to come in and ruin all of that? They showed Cochise, they showed Santo Domingo, they showed Zia, Zuni, San, all the Pueblos. And they were talking about their, what they do for a living, where they get their torque going, where they get what they do. And here the commissioners are trying to ruin that. I don't see that. So are they allowed to do that to also to, and not just us, the Native Americans?
I don't want to burn up this sloppy afternoon. I'd be happy to field more of your questions. Let me, let me throw up some things that have nothing to do with oil and gas. I think I missed it before, but I'll say it again. Cochise Lake, we'll be getting with Chief Maxon and taking a look at how we get a new fire vehicle for you and an ambulance. I met with Lieutenant Keith Elder at Sandoval County SO for you and for the people up on the east mountain. And that is law enforcement presence. I'm going to meet with Captain Traxler. And we're going to ride herd on the patrol tenants to get more frequent visits by the SO up here and up on the other side of the mountain. In addition to that, the sheriff's office has a reserve officer program, which some of you might be interested in. You go through the same training that sheriff's officer does. And you would have the opportunity to work alongside a regular officer. It's not as comprehensive as I hoped it would be that you could put on your badge and your gun. And if there were a problem up here, you could handle it rather than waiting an hour for law enforcement to come up. But we'll work on that, okay? If you have other questions, I'd be happy to talk with you. Thank you very much for coming. But let me say this again. I had the privilege two semesters ago to teach the Constitution. What a magnificent document. But what became abundantly clear is that our form of government only works if people participate. And if you don't participate, then you can't moon broom about it. Thank you all very much.